Educating, Informing, Serving. TVE, Keeping Government Honest.
Call this meeting to orders, 5:31, Monday, October 19th, Rockingham School Board. Jason Terry, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get two adjustments. Welcome, Megan, to the group. Glad to have a full board and appreciate your willingness to come at such a crazy time. So, thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Priscilla, go ahead.
I don't have an adjustment, but I just wanted to comment that, since I'm here by myself with Eric. Eric does come in and out, and he will be in here. He does not understand anything that's going on, and I'm making that clear because of something that happened at a previous meeting. I want you to know that I do need to be able to recognize him and be able to not upset anybody by his being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Any adjustments? No. Review and approve Board minutes for October 5th meeting? Does everybody have a chance to look at those? If so, actually, I think there may have. I think I did see an error, but I... Hang on just a quick second, now that I'm thinking about it. Oh, no, never mind. I'm sorry. Priscilla, go ahead.
George?
Yep.
I have one. I would like the bottom of the first page corrected. At least it prints on the first page for me, where it comments under policies and what I said about the chat. The third line, the first line's okay. Priscilla said, "The attorney advised against having the chat open for public comments." Put a period there and then say, "The public should..." "...talk during the public comment times or mail or email comments to board members." Otherwise, it looks like the attorney advised against all of that, and that's not what happened.
What, was that the motion, or was the motion as written?
No, the motion's fine. It's just that the comments above it, because it's misleading. So, it does need to be changed.
So, okay, so you're talking about not the motion itself, but above it?
Right above it, right. Where it says, it started, "George feels that the public should be able to speak during the times."
Yep.
They can during public. Priscilla said, "The attorneys advised against having the chat open for public comments." "The public should be able to speak, talk during the public comment times or mail or email comments to board members."
And what are you saying it should say?
That's what it should say.
That's what it does?
Because it says, no, it says, "And allowing the public to talk during..." It's saying that the attorney's advising against it.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying. Okay, so, yeah, that correction, that correction makes sense. So, with that correction, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes last meeting.
So moved.
Roll call, Jason Terry?
Approve.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Is Jason Benson here yet? Megan, you weren't here, so...
I am here. I approve.
Okay. Motion passes, okay. Moving on. Communication and public comments. Is there anybody, anybody have anything they'd like to say? I have not got any emails or messages, so I've got nothing from the public. Going once. Going twice. Moving on. Policies? Do you have any policies, Chris? Anything, anybody?
No, we do not have any policies.
I think Priscilla's comments confirms our chat policy, so I don't need to talk about that anymore. All right, moving into reports. Principals. Who would like to go first?
I can go.
Yeah, you just popped up, so I was gonna call for you. Thanks.
I can go. Was it me, or who were you talking to? I'm sorry, George.
Oh, that's fine. You're unmuted. Go ahead, Ms. Bukowski.
All right. So, we continue to have enrollment grow. We are up to 185 students. Got word today, we're gonna have another sixth grader coming back. That brings the sixth grade total up to 40 students. Depending on the learning platform, whether it's high-bread or having all the students in, we're gonna have to start talking about a wait list for students that may choose to return from VTVLC. We're moving ahead with our progress for Step 3, working with our fifth grade teachers and communicating with the fifth grade parents. We've got a couple teachers who had to set up classrooms, one who has to move their classroom in order to accommodate the increased number of students. So, we will be ready to welcome back the fifth graders on November 2nd. This Friday, I will be emailing all the fifth grade parents, the reassigned pods, because this forces us to reassign all the pods, going from four separate groups, two pods in each cohort, to three pods, and the students will be with us four days a week. We wanted to open up our cafeteria for breakfast this week. However, we ordered some Plexiglas shields, and those have not arrived. So, when those arrive, we're gonna open up the cafeteria for breakfast as we start to think about possibly using it for lunch servings, depending on social distancing and other scheduling guidelines, et cetera. UA classes are settled in to their classrooms, and that's going really well. UA meeting Unified Arts. And PE is gonna stay outside as long as the temperatures are above 32 degrees. I sent an email, as part of my email, to parents this Friday so that they can have their children bring appropriate clothing. We're starting to talk about plans for bringing back sixth grade next. But first, we wanna make sure we get the fifth grade back in safely and any changes, et cetera, that we feel we need to make, we can make before we bring another group back. The sixth grade teachers are working on developing pods for full student attendance, and that means new class lists, like I just outlined. I would like to say that our sixth grade has the best attendance for the remote and virtual learning. They've actually had days where they have had no absences total. That pretty much wraps up my report. We're finishing up makeup tests with MAP testing, and you know, the big piece is how we're progressing to Step 3. Any questions?
I see, Priscilla, before you go, I just wanna say I appreciate, you know, looking ahead to the other kids and having that in your mind as well while you're, you know, working on getting these other kids, the younger kids, back. So, just wanted to say thank you for that. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Yes, and after I ask my next question, maybe you can give us an estimate of when you think maybe the sixth grade could get there, because it would be nice to, you know, hopefully it's not too long after the second. But we talked about last time about the students that are struggling with the remote learning and maybe looking at the numbers that in seventh and eighth grade now in particular, because you're saying that there isn't space right now to get them back and maybe getting those struggling learners back in there that are really struggling. I know the high school's doing that, and it's improving their instruction for their children. So, I know you were gonna do that. Have you come up with the numbers that you might be going to do that for, for seventh and eighth to begin with? And have you done anything with looking at alternatives for getting those seventh and eighth graders back in at least for four days?
So, the first part of your question, Priscilla, where you are starting to discuss that at the seventh and eighth grade level, some of those students, this week is midterm reports are going home, and we can also get additional data from MAP testing, et cetera, in terms of how we wanna prioritize those students. So, there are discussions starting about that. I called the First United Church, and they have a recording on that says that their building is closed. So, I, that, you know, in terms of exploring that, we talked as a staff about some concerns that we do have, such as the proximity of the school nurse. You know, at a remote site, that there would be no good nurse there. Also, if that site was open to the public, concerns there about, you know, we have a no visitor policy, and all of our grade levels have designated bathrooms. And so, we were concerned about the public being able to use that building and contamination there. There was a concern about meal distribution that was brought up, concern about students participating in their Unified Arts classes and how that would develop, you know, break down the schedule that we currently have, students that receive special services, such as speech, counseling, and special education needs. So, I know Superintendent Pratt and I had a brief discussion, and I sent him our task force notes where we did discuss that.
Okay, and how does the fact that now the fifth and sixth can be closer together, though, that should help with maybe, possibly affecting the numbers and the way the others can do? And I know you probably haven't had a chance to do much with that at this point, but could you maybe do that before our next meeting? Because that might impact whether you can put those kids in there, because with the others now going to three to six feet, maybe there's enough room for you to do the others at six feet if you rearrange them some way. Anyway, I know it's a big task. I know it's a lot to look at.
But I can tell you that I don't have any extra classrooms, any extra space, like to bring sixth grade back, you know, we're going to have to use the community room, et cetera. And that's the problem, is I am space locked. I don't have empty classrooms that we could put overflow in right now. And with the social distancing guideline staying at six feet for seventh and eighth grade, that would be very difficult. We can continue to discuss it, and you know, really, the only, looking at the cafeteria, but then that would, you know, sabotage our plans to be able to use our cafeteria and, you know, give our students some extra time outside of their pods. What we are starting to see is some fatigue, being in the same room all day.
And like I said, there's huge obstacles, everything, and even every time you change, it brings up a huge new set of things to think about and do. And it's a horrible year that we're having to look at, but we do appreciate what you're doing. But I do think at some point, we've got to find some way of overcoming these obstacles and figure out what to do for those other students.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Thanks, Karen.
And Karen, I can get you contact info, just so you can continue to explore that, you know, the church option. There's other churches' buildings that I, that I'm very familiar with, and I can get you some of that contact info, so you can at least explore those. I'll do that offline at some point here. Any other questions?
And George, also explore the United Church again, because I know they had a meeting yesterday, I just know they held one, about opening up and uses of the church. So, if you approached them, they might, it might be different also, so...
Yeah, so those are, those would be discussions that, you know, who knows what's gonna happen there? But like I said, I can certainly get you those contacts and continue to explore. Any other, Chris, go ahead. You got something?
I also looked into what it would cost for modular buildings. And right now, one of the budgetary quotes that we have for a modular building for a 60-month lease would be $7,850 a month, and you'd have to come up with $39,180 just for a delivery and setup. And that's base of the line, that's base of the line modular building that... We would need to do additional stuff for, to get students into it, to meet code, and send them, we're talking up to about $46,000 for delivery and setup. So, I have started looking into modular prices.
So, you said $46,000 for delivery and setup, and then on top of that, $78,500 a month? Is that what you said?
Well, the base of the line unit, it would be $39,180 for delivery and setup. And the, for 60 months, you'd be looking at $7,850 a month, for 60 months.
On top of the $39,000?
Yes.
Say that last figure one more time, sorry.
$7,849.
Per month? Wow. Any other comments, questions for Ms. Bukowski before we move on? Ms. Kennedy, I see you up on my screen, so go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, and I'd like to welcome Ms. Applegate. And just so you know, I'm the principal of Central Elementary School. So, just to give you an update. So, we have the MAP testing is finishing the finals this week, too, for the makeups. We had great news, we were able to bring our kindergarten back today for the first part of Phase 3 return. So, we were able to bring both cohorts in. That went very well. And we have better news for first and second grade. So, beginning next Monday, the 26th, they will be able to come back in four days a week, which is a week ahead of time. And we'll be able to bring everybody else in. And a shout out to all the staff who've been working hard in this and Student Services to make sure that we can cover that. Cindy Rounds, my secretary, is able to work magic to get those desks in even earlier than expected, so that was fabulous. And my studio staff and everybody's working hard to get the spaces ready. And the teachers will be working this Wednesday on a remote day to come in and get the classrooms ready, because we kinda threw it on them that we were able to get this going today. So, we'll make changes and make sure we can get the students in as fast as possible and safely as possible.
Is that in second and third grade?
Second, that was first and second grade.
First and second grade, thank you.
So, we're in the final stages of hiring a new teacher, which would allow us the third and fourth grades. So, we're potentially still looking at the ninth, depending on hiring this teacher. And that's the availability of the actual teacher. And so, hopefully, if all goes well, we can maybe do it beforehand, but at least by the ninth, we should be able to bring in third and fourth grade for the four days as well. And similar to Ms. Bukowski, we have the waiting list for the VTVLC, particularly in those grades. We have a lot of students that have been starting to return, and we have no more room. So, hopefully, once the new teacher's in, we can maybe look at some other possibilities of other students coming back. But right now, we have literally no room. I'm just trying to look at the updates here. Anything else? We've got, right now, just to give updates for educationally, we're doing really well. The teachers had a refresher on running records and just learning for literacy, how to make sure the students are doing well academically and, you know, what level they're at for literacy. We have another PD coming up this week, and we'll be working on making sure the students are grouped formally and getting into their instructional and independent reading levels. We have Title I is really working hard on making sure that they're grouping their students by need, and they're working on the leveled literacy initiative. So, a shout out to all of them. And we're doing our Community Connections and Spirit Days, starting that. And so, we're working with some community organizations. We're working on card donations for some elderly groups. We'll be working on canned good donations, pet care donations to some local pet shelters and things. So, we're trying to work hard to support our community needs and promote some spirit to a special Spirit Days, Flannel Fridays this Friday, things like that. So, we'll be sharing those out to the community and helping out where we can. That's pretty much what's going on. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kennedy? Chris, and Lynn, for that matter, I had a thought just now. The, it might be premature, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in. The kids that are in VTVLC, at what point can they make the firm choice to come back to school? And you don't have to answer right now, but I'm sure that's gonna impact as well, right? I mean, I think if I remember right, it was the beginning of the year. They had through the, through the end of this year. Is that right?
Well, you know, technically, the, anyone who signed up for the VTVLC, they had the first two weeks to pull out. After that, after those two weeks, they're tied into at least January. But our teachers are committed to it all year, so different levels.
I guess more specifically, when we get to January, and let's just say they all wanna come back, that's gonna present some problems, I would assume.
Yeah. Based on the current social distancing, yes, that's why we're, we need to create some sort of waiting list so we can start getting the people back, if the social distancing is still in place.
Okay, thanks. Sorry to hijack that. Any other questions for Ms. Kennedy? Priscilla, go ahead.
No, just to follow up on that, VTVLC. So, if the two weeks are over, isn't it a firm thing at this point that we should be able to work with the current enrollment so that we're not having to deal with that right at the moment from now until at least till January?
Well, we have a small population that we wanna bring back, just because whether they're IEP students, so they're just struggling learners. So, we've been trying, we've been working with VTVLC to make an exception to those students. It's a small number of students, but for the most part, you're right. We're not looking at a huge population of kids that are coming back until January.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Kennedy?
No, but I do wanna say that I'm impressed that at least we hold it up, and you're more in line with the other schools. Thank you, Carrie, so much for working so hard on that. I applaud all your teachers and all the schools. I mean, it's a terrible, terrible situation we're dealing with. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard, are you in here somewhere?
I am.
Oh, there you are. Go ahead.
Good evening. Welcome, Megan. We had a fantastic first day today with all of our kindergarten, first, second, and grade students. They're with us for in-person instruction and will be for four days a week, so it's great to have them back. We've also welcomed back two VTVLC students, and we'll be welcoming back another November 2nd. We are now planning for our third and fourth graders, who will be coming back on November 2nd, and we look forward to having a full house thereafter. Our intervention groups are up and running, which is fantastic. We have all of our benchmarking done. We had a local photographer, Kristy Leesai, took outdoor school pictures last week, which was great to have that happen in an outdoor setting. As Carrie mentioned, teachers will engage in professional learning on Wednesday afternoon by taking a deeper dive into running records with our literacy consultant, Janie. We'll have dental cleanings next Monday and Tuesday. Barb will come in, as usual. And during our in-service time on the 29th and 30th, we'll be focusing primarily on technology and literally unpacking and assembling student resources specific to our new F&amp;P Classroom Phonics and Word Study curriculum. As you may know, we offer a reading challenge through our PTO. Our awesome PTO is, again, sponsoring our reading challenge, and parent Jackie Johnson is coordinating the program. Today, I received the first list of pages read and the rewards. And our students have read 359,000 pages, and those are just those that are participating in the program. So, woo-hoo to our students. I'll be announcing it during morning announcements tomorrow. So excited about that. We received a very generous contribution towards our activities fund from the Office of Sam and Nostrand, hopefully I'm saying that correctly, who represent Vermont Benwyn Charities Incorporated in the amount of $2,500. And as I recall from last year, the school board must approve of this as the amount is over $1,000. Is that, that's correct? I see Chris nodding, yes. So, I don't know if you wanna do that now, or I'm almost at the very tail end.
Let me go ahead and finish up, and we'll take care of it afterwards.
We also received two beautiful handmade quilts from a local quilter, Isabel Croetro, and I didn't say her name correctly at all, to distribute to students in need, which was a lovely contribution and went to certainly students in need. And we are so, so very fortunate to have a supportive community, and so, thank you to our, our community.
Any questions for Ms. Hazard? Priscilla, go ahead.
First, I guess, just in response to, is there a need for more blankets or quilts, Laura?
Not that I am aware of, but I can certainly ask our school nurse and school counselor, who, who would know more so than I do. But I believe our needs are met at this point.
Or either items with winter coming up, coats, hats, mittens, that kind of stuff?
Yes, our nurse is also coordinating, coordinating winter clothing at this time. So, I can't remember the name of the organization. I wish I had it with me, but I don't. But the same thing happened last year, where winter, winter clothing was provided to students in need. And so, that is in progress right now, gathering those details.
And I wanted to say, your newsletter is impressive. Thank you for sharing that with us. I read it through.
Thank you.
George, it's okay. Go ahead, I have a general question. Based on, based on the calendar, I was noting that next Friday is in-service, and then Thursday is a half-day. I know the first week of school, we did, we did Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday for those students that were only coming every, you know, those two days. Is there any plan for doing something next week? Because you will have students that are only there a half-day. It's for all the schools.
Chris, I think that'd probably be more appropriate for you to respond to that.
Yeah, no, not at this time. There's, there's no plans to rearrange the schedule for those days.
And can we do something? Because we did it for those first four days of the year. I mean, students just a half-day of school for a week is kind of sad.
How will that impact the kids in the other pod or the other days? Is there gonna be like an imbalance there possibly, or?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's gonna be an imbalance, but you know, we, we have those when we have snow days as well. It's one of those things that we have to, you know, pick and choose. And right now, we, we weren't looking to rearrange the schedule because of the domino effect it could cause. And flipping up the schedule can also cause hardship for families, too, who may be looking for childcare or coverage in the schedule set.
But wouldn't if you had the Thursday, Friday ones come on Wednesday and the half-day on Thursday, it would simply mean that they didn't have to have childcare on Wednesday? Instead of, then they would have to have childcare instead on Friday, which they're gonna have to have anyway. So, it would give them, provide them more in-class time. So, anyways, just a thought. Think about it.
I have a question, comment, and it's probably a mute point, but any thought, and I know it's low on the list, any thought on winter sports? Any ideas, is that a possibility of happening, not happening? Just maybe a quick, I don't know, any, any thoughts there?
I don't think we're already down the road that far yet, but I know it's, it's on our radar, just like it was for after-school activities when we started the school year. We're just keeping an eye on it and hoping the state will give us guidance in regards to moving forward with the winter activities, because they are closely related, whether it's winter sports or winter after-school activities. I think we're looking for the state to see how they're going to... I think we're looking for the state to see how they're going to give us their guidance, which is sometimes contradicting.
I have not heard anything from Oakmo specifically, George.
I still have my skis from last year. I haven't heard from them and anyway, very aside, aside note, anyway, any other questions for any of the principals before we move on?
Don't forget to go back to the.
Oh, yes, yep. Yeah, so I think we can just jump in and Priscilla, you'd know better than I, we can just jump in and approve those funds now, right?
I would think so.
Yeah. So do we have to make a motion to do that? I'd entertain one.
I move that we accept the, how much is it, Laura? And where's it from?
$2,500.
$2,500 for, is it for activities?
It is for our activities fund, is what the letter says.
To be applied to the activities fund. Is it from a specific thing or is it anonymous?
For, it's from the local lawyer who represents Vermont Benwyn Charities Incorporated.
Okay, from the Vermont lawyer who accepts, represents, whatever you said.
Roll call. Jason Benson, I saw you enter the room.
Yes.
Mr. Terry. Yes, Priscilla?
Yes.
Yes, and I am, Megan, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, so funds are approved or?
Thank you.
Whatever, yeah. Moving on. WNESU Board, I think we're all, most of us were there, but. Go ahead, Jason.
Are we going to go over the business office stuff first or do you want to go over WNESU Board?
No, that's good. I put a check mark next to it prematurely, sorry. Business office, yeah. Business office update, uh, business updates. Laura, I guess that's you.
Yes, hi. I was trying to unmute. So right now, the office itself, we don't have a lot of updates. We've just been working today with all the refunds from the schools and reimbursements. We updated the process a little bit. We decided to go with no open POs, just to avoid the extra spending and no control on what, what is being spent. So right now, everything will be going through Frank Biddy, which is our, one of the new employees. So he could just review reimbursements as well. Anything over 60 days will not be reimbursed. So it's just the same policy that has always been in place. So it's just maybe like reiterating the information and sending it out there so everybody could be aware. Other than that, we don't really have a lot of changes. Last week, I guess you all received the budget versus actual. I am not sure if you guys have been following up on it. We have all the warrants in the office. Nobody has scheduled any appointments to come and see them. And we're doing the extra steps to put them there for you guys. So I was hoping that somebody would at least come by and look at them. But at least they're being signed online, which we appreciate that. So that's all for us.
Jason Terry, go ahead.
George, who are the signers for our board? I certainly would like to see all those things.
I'm the one that typically gets them, but I believe if I'm correct, we all have authority to sign, right? Is that right, Chris?
Yes, that's, this board voted to, for all of you to have the authority to sign if you do.
Okay, great. Flora, I'll make an appointment with you to look at those.
So, so Jason, next time I, I, I get one, I will, I could forward it over to you. Or I don't know if maybe you're getting them already, I don't know.
I'd probably get them a second because you're a big dog.
So what, what we're doing right now is every Tuesday of a pay, of a pay Friday, the warrants are in my office, so anybody could come in and look at them. And they have any questions, Marlene is right there, so we can answer any questions. So, but then, you know, next week, the Friday, they will go away and we'll put the new ones. So that way we could file the old ones, put new ones out. So next ones will be coming out next Tuesday. Right now, they're still there, the ones from last week.
Okay, so we have, it sounds like we have the, when, when we receive the warrants for signature, there's the following week we have to come down.
So this Friday is payroll Friday for us. So the new warrants will be in my office on Tuesday. Right now, we still have the old ones there. So we just keep them there until we get new ones on Tuesday.
Or are those were being put online to all of us? And that should be continuing to happen?
Yes, no, no, this is just because I know you guys were asking if there was a possibility for you to see the warrants like it used to be. But since we have COVID and there's no way of bringing them in, I keep them in my office in case you guys want to review anything than just like signing how it used to be. It was just an extra step we put in and just to make it available for you guys.
Thank you for that, Flora.
So just for ease of use, I'll continue to sign, but like if Jason wants to stop down, or I want to stop down, or Priscilla, Megan, anybody wants to stop down sometime, might as well send it to them as well if it's not being done already. And again, I'll continue to be the signer and go over them, but should, you guys should be, you know, know what you're looking at to question or whatnot, so.
It helps me as well when I do the, the process of approving POs. You know, if it's something that is a concern for you guys budget-wise and everything, then it's something that I could take into consideration once we approve POs. You know, anything that pops off for you guys when you just look at the warrants is something that we could take care of and avoid for it to happen or avoid things to get approved. Or maybe something that you want to put a stop on and wait until it gets approved, different things. It's just as better if you guys come in and look at them. It helps, it helps us as well in the business office.
Thank you, Flora. Any other questions, comments? Jason Terry?
Yeah, I have a couple actually, Flora. You had mentioned that the reimbursement, 60 days is the cutoff. Can you give me an example of something that would be asked to be reimbursed and somebody was at? Well, first, does, is everyone aware of the policy of 60 days?
So this policy is not new, it's been in place forever. I did reviewed it when I started there in August. So in August 25th, I sent it out to everybody, all of the staff, so they can know which one is a process. And so they sent that out again as a reminder, especially because they submit a lot of receipts to us with different information. They expect for us to reimburse taxes, which we are tax exempt, we cannot reimburse taxes. It, it's just, they put receipts on hold for a couple of months and then they submit us an envelope with 10, 15 receipts and they want a reimbursement right away. So it's just to avoid a lot of things that have been happening in the past. You know, we don't want an envelope with 10 receipts that you collected from a couple of months. If you need your reimbursement, I feel that 60 days is more than fair, you know, for you to get your reimbursement.
Okay, thank you. Another question for you. What do you see so far? You've been in place a month now or so, something like that, right? I think.
Yes.
I, I think you're doing a decent job, thank you. What do you see so far as your areas of opportunities WNESU-wise?
Like processes to work and put in place?
Profit, where are we losing money? Where, where do you see the taxpayers? Where can you help the taxpayers, I guess?
And I, I, hang on, let me, let me jump in first, just wrangle that into the Rockingham Group, as that's the scope of our, our existence.
Thank you, George, Rockingham Group. Just curious, what do you see so far?
So, so Rockingham is one of our biggest ones that we've been finding, the issues with holding, holding receipts and then expecting reimbursement for a couple of months of receipt pending. I think the biggest is just having open purchase orders, you know, that they put them in place in June or July, and then they expect to have them open and then have open spending for the whole year, you know, and then us reimbursing that amount. So at this point, to avoid that and have a better process in place, I, I just closed out all open POs. Right now, if anybody needs to make a purchase, that's why we have plenty of vendors, and that's, this way we know ahead what is being approved and what they're purchasing, instead of having a purchase order that is open for anybody to go purchase and bring me a receipt for me to reimburse. So I think that's the first step.
Okay, so like when I see on the warrant, like I see like, you know, Amazon, you know, Staples, WB Mason, is that's what you're talking about right there?
Those are our vendors, and that's how, that's the process that everybody should be following up. Unless it is an emergent purchase, which is most likely slight to none, or if it is a COVID-related purchase, you know, like we need emerging like Plexiglas for one of the facility, or we need emerging hand-stanizizer or a mask, you know, that is something that I would definitely not hesitate on approving. But you know, something like markers and glue, how emergent is that as a purchase?
And, and that's something that you like approve every purchase? Is that how that works?
The first step, it goes through the principals, and then the last one is me as an approver, yes. And then it depends if it is a big contract, dollar amount over $1,000, then the final approver will be Chris.
Gotcha, thank you. I, I did not know all that. Thank you, that's good to know. And that's all I have. Thank you, Flora.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments for Flora? Thank you, Flora. Now we're moving on to WNESU Board. Anybody care to give a quick update? I think most of us were there, maybe not. I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry. What, Chris, yeah, Chris, what did we talk about the SU Board? What were some of the big, big ticket items? Do you recall? I'm sorry, I drew a blank.
There's so many meetings in between then. And we spent a lot of time in executive session before going into executive session. I'm right there with you, I'm drawing.
Sorry.
I can't remember what the.
Well, I guess, I guess the essence is, it's nothing so significant that it needs to be.
No, I think, I think.
I see David Clark here. David, would you mind chiming in and giving us a quick overview?
Okay, here we go. I'm David Clark. I sit on the Bellows Falls Union High School Board representing Westminster. I'm one of the three high school reps on the Supervised Reunion Board, and I chair the Supervised Reunion Board. Most people know that, but I realize there are probably a few people who aren't aware of that. So let's, let's go back to the agenda here. We, we had, I hate to use the term boilerplate, but we had our regular update from Chris on enrollment changes by school. We had a look at the question of quarantine staff, which seems to be largely a phenomenon at Bellows Falls Middle School. Appreciate the fact that Karen Bukowski brought that up the last time you met, because I think that is the sort of thing we're going to need to keep track of, particularly headed toward the holidays when both families and staff may be traveling, and that can have some impact on program. We had busing update. We had a discussion of the business office reorganization, and I want to make a big shout out to Flora and her staff, because at the beginning of the meeting, George, Flora introduced her staff, and actually it was very interesting because they told us what their responsibilities are. And I only speak for myself, but I had a great deal of confidence in hearing from the people who are actually doing the work. And I, once again, speak for myself, but suspect this is also the sentiment of the rest of the SU Board. We thought that things are in hand in the business office, and I think we got a pretty good feeling from that. Obviously, the SU Board is going to want to keep track of what's happening in the business office, but we certainly, I think, had a lot more confidence coming out of last Wednesday night's meeting than we've had for quite some time. We've of course got our financial report. We did hear the Lynn Law report on business office personnel, which is an issue from about a year ago. And I will simply say that counsel, our legal counsel's recommendation is it is a personnel matter and not suitable for public discussion. So that leaves it there. And we have the usual director's comments, set a date for the next meeting of October 28th, and there's your summary, George.
Thank you, David, and I apologize for putting you on the spot and for my unpreparedness. So thank you, appreciate it.
Here, just in case.
Excellent, perfect, thanks.
George?
Any comments, questions? Yeah, go ahead.
The only other thing that, that we did discuss and that is of concern is staff travel and that. And I guess basically at this point, maybe just we, the encouragement of staff to be careful if not going to red areas or yellow areas outside of the state, so they don't have to quarantine, because that could put our schools in jeopardy of being able to present programs to our children. So, and, and I think our, and hopefully our staff will be careful of that, because as, some of them are older, they are really concerned with the COVID issues, so I think they will be careful.
Thank you, Priscilla. Jason Terry, go ahead. Jason Benson, if you want to jump in anytime, just, you don't have your camera, so just give a yell, all right? Go ahead, Jason Terry.
Priscilla, I, I think Mr. Pratt was sending out an email to everyone about that, so I think that has been taken care of. Thank you.
Yeah, I sent an email out on Friday to all the, to all the staff, pretty much what you're saying, Priscilla, just take extra caution and be aware of responsibilities if we do, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're moving on.
George, I have one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I know at the last meeting, Jen, Jen Burke, the school nurse for Central School, also brought up about the students traveling as well. So, Mr. Pratt, I don't know if it's a good idea for you to send out that email to all of the families, which I thought Ms. Burke's comments were spot-on, so I think we all need to be careful. It's not just teachers, it's, it's all of us. We all, we all have that responsibility to have a common sense, so I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Now, we're working on another follow-up email to send out to our families, pretty similar to the one we sent out to, to the teachers, just giving them the procedures and, and, you know, what we need to follow and be careful. I think the, the other thing is that it's not just people leaving the state, and there's a lot of times, people have, out of people from out of state and red areas visiting them at their houses. So there's further concern there too as well in regards to not just leaving the state, but people entering the state and, you know, sharing the same space with family members that may be coming from a red, red area. So I'm, I'm in the process of trying to generate a friendly letter, just to give the people the information they need to make safe decisions.
Thank you. I think we're, we're good there, right, guys? Moving on to unfinished business for discussion, action if any. Ongoing discussion moving from step two to three, in particular, progress, obstacles, and next steps. This was added as a request from a board member. A lot of it, I think, has already been touched on by the principals and superintendent. But, you know, any additional progress, updates would be welcome here. Any other obstacles would be welcome at this point to be shared. And, you know, next steps, what, what are we going to do going forward? I mean, I'd be happy to sit here and brainstorm all night, but I know that's probably not realistic. But Chris, if you wouldn't mind speaking to some of that, maybe, I don't know if any of your staff or anything, but. Chris, if you wouldn't mind speaking to some of that, maybe, I don't know if any of your staff or anything, but um, I think you get the idea of where that's, what, what, what we're looking for with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, next steps, we wanna continue to move forward. I don't think we wanna get complacent at any, any point and really continue to follow what the um, health research and the data is showing us when it gets to um, cases throughout the state. Now, like we all know, um, Southern Vermont i- is much lower than Central and Northern Vermont. Um, so I think, you know, I think what we're trying to keep an eye on um, are also possible obstacles that we have. Um, because you know, we're starting to get on a roll in regards to bringing students back. Um, but one of the obstacles, a potential obstacle is, you know, what is it gonna, what is this gonna look like for us after the holidays? Um, you know, we know that we're, we urge people as much as possible to be safe and um, and report if they're leaving the state or have um, people visiting them from out of state. But that's not necessarily mean to say that, you know, everyone is going to do that. So I think, you know, moving forward, I think some of our um, you know, worries are also our obstacles and we wanna continue to bring students back. But we also know that at any given time, we have to be ready to, to react to a possible um, COVID case that may enter our S U. Um, so it's, it's constantly something that as an administrative team, we're meeting and talking about and of course, you know, sharing that with all of you. So that's our, I think that's the next upcoming obstacle that we're really trying to keep an eye on is with the holiday seasons approaching. Keep and everyone as safe as possible and and make good decisions around um, knowing that when we come back from any kind of recess that we wanna come back um, to a safe and healthy environment. And it's tough because we don't have control over where people travel or who comes to the state. Um, but that, that doesn't really make much of a difference to us as administrators. We wanna keep everybody safe. So I think, you know, it's, it's one of the same, they, it's uh, it's so many unknowns, but at the same token, um, we wanna um, hope for the best and prepare for the worst.
So, so more particularly, and I think um, especially Ms. Bukowski touched on it already, but um, obstacles for getting seventh and eighth grade back. I mean, we know the uh, the biggest obstacle is the um, you know, spacing inside the school. And at this point, it seems, sounds like um, the inability to contact, be able to reach other, other folks. Any other um, obstacles or barriers that could be um, talked about, could be discussed? Could we hash something out? I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm just uh.
I, I think our biggest obstacle we're facing right now is that um, you know, just like everyone else. I mean, our jobs would be so much easier if we could bring everyone back. But I think the biggest obstacle we keep revisiting is the social distancing. I'm, I'm glad that the state loosened up for K through six um, for the three feet, cuz that was allowed us to bring more back. But I think once we start looking at um, you know, seventh and eighth grade, um, especially at the middle school, um, is that in, you know, right now until um, social distancing, you know, the six feet is um, either gone away, we know that's not gonna happen or reduced and that's very unlikely too. As much as, you know, it's, it's really tough to um, bring more kids back into the building. You know, that's why we're taking it one step at a time and bring the fifth back, see what the building looks like, bring the sixth back, see what the space looks like. But our biggest obstacle right now is the social distancing that we know we all need until this is under control.
Jason Terry, saw your hand first. Go ahead.
Uh, Chris, uh, on the um, social distancing aspect, when you mention it to the people at the state, um, as far as like, I'm sure you have meetings and stuff like that, when you tell them the challenges that your specific schools are having, what is their response to you?
There were the challenges cuz our, you know, you know, our challenges aren't unique to our area. There is a lot, there are a lot of schools around the state who um, you know, in within an S U, some of them can facilitate all their students based on the size of the building. And um, others, they know that it, it is an obstacle. Um, so you know, they're aware of it. Um, but like I said, uh, in, until we start turning that corner and seeing um, some progress and in not so many cases of COVID, especially, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot up in Central and Northern Vermont. That, I mean, they, they understand that they, they, they know it's no surprise to them when, when uh, when it's brought up.
I, I guess that's surprising that, that they know the challenges of the space, the spacing, that um, they would come up with a one-off cuz I assume that they would want uh, more kids back in school more often. But um, I don't know, not, not my area of expertise above my pay grade.
Yeah, they, you know, they, they do, but I, I think the, the biggest thing right now is that um, they know they can't go out with it. They, based on all the research, they can't just, you know, throw the social distance out the window. It's like the rest of, you know, they want the kids to go back in school as well, but they're not willing, you know, based on CDC guidance to, to um, you know, you know, throw all the, the guidance and the social distancing stuff out the window. Um, but they realize it is, it is a struggle. Everything about this is a struggle. That's what I'm finding.
Let's have one last follow-up before, Priscilla, sorry. Um, has your task force that you guys are meeting on, on a regular basis? Um, have you guys looked at again as far as measuring rooms and stuff? Are you just going based on the same uh, blueprint you had at the beginning? I mean, I don't know if it's something can redo with uh, specifically the middle school. Um, maybe there's room in the gym if we're not, if uh, we're having outside gym with the temperatures above thirty degrees, maybe we can use the gym as the school and instead of buying um, trailers or what, I forget what you said, but instead of buying that, we could put up partitions in a gym to, to have uh, separate classrooms. I mean, that's, it would be kinda like the high school because the high school has really no walls, so it would be kinda similar to that. So, I don't know, just a thought.
We, we talk about it all the time in regards to what it looks like for each school and the space that we can use and how much, you know, um, e- even down to if we take the teacher's desk out of one classroom, we can get two more seats into it. So I mean, I, I'm very fortunate that the, the principals, you know, know their buildings very well and in the spacing and the footage and stuff. And if you move a bookshelf out or, or a desk out, what that means for additional student space. And I think we're, we're stripping the rooms down to the bare minimums and we're gonna continue to use as much space in the school as possible. But there's conference rooms and some schools can use the gyms and some schools can't. Remember, we have some of these um, schools have like the gym, a cafeteria kind of thing. So it's um, you know, we might only be able to use that for a particular part of the day. Um, especially now that we're using the gyms again for P E, that kinda limits our, our usage of the, of that space. And then if it's for some of these schools, if it's not P E, you have lunch going on. If it's not lunch, you have, you know, coral or something. So we're constantly, we are constantly looking at it, you know, at least once a week, Jason, in regards to where we currently lie with space based on students coming back. It's not, you know, it's not um, we're not just settling for the numbers we initially came up with. We're constantly looking, find ways to get more kids in the classroom, even if we're stripping the classrooms down to just no teachers' desks and moving bookshelves out. So.
Plus, plus there's more students that are living here now than at the beginning of the year. So uh, you know, thank you for what you and your staff and uh, everyone's doing. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Priscilla.
Yes, I, I, uh, and I could, I thought when reading out the order, it was if, you know, you're doing the six feet as much as possibly, possible. And I know we, we certainly need to try to stick to that if at all possible. But if there's a slight variation that we kept them in there, maybe we need to at least consider it. Um, and I definitely would encourage that, looking at those students that are struggling with that remote and get those back in even without waiting too much longer for the seventh and eighth as the high school is doing, doing. I read somewhere that I think they've got thirty five of their students coming back in under that, under that kind of program. So if we could do the same thing at least for our seventh and eighth as a start measure, that would be really great. Thanks. Megan's got her hand up.
Megan, go ahead.
Hi, um, Priscilla, can you explain what you mean by like slight variance, what you are asking them to do? I, I don't understand, like cheat under a little six feet? Is that what you want them to do?
I just, I think that's, I think that's what the guidance says, but I'd have to go back and review it to be absolutely positive.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
And, and the thing is, a, a lot of those students are also in contact with our other students. They've got brothers and sisters and that, they're there. So, so you're getting the same thing from a lot of them. But I'm particularly worried about those students that don't do well with, with remote and, and really need more of the in-person. So if we can at least get those addressed quickly, that would be really great.
Okay, I just, you know, for me, I have four children inside the school district, so I, I have skin in the game. And I don't know that I'm comfortable asking principals and, and our administrators to squeeze them in a little to make more fit if the guidelines are specifically what they are. But I'm new and so I still have to, I have to read, dig down and, and read everything also. I just wanted to be clear what I heard, what slight variance meant. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry, I think that's what the guidance said. That's why I used that, but I could be wrong in the terminology.
Thank you both. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I think, you know, you know, Ms. Bukowski spoke about it earlier that, you know, she is looking into, um, you know, the students that are struggling. And um, you know, we'll continue to work on that. So, you know, I know just based on what Ms. Bukowski said earlier, there's something we're, we're looking at. But um, as far as going into the six feet, that's not something that um, you know, I don't think any of the administration are looking at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, this is Laura. Just to clarify what you just said, um, you said that we are not looking at anything under six feet?
Seventh and eighth grade. Anything above sixth grade, I mean, like, like we all know, K through six is, um, we can go as low as three feet, but above sixth grade, it's still six feet. And we're, we're sticking, you know, hard to, to the six feet until the state gives us further guidance.
Yes, I heard wrong. Thank you.
I don't see any, any other hands. I think it's safe to assume we can move on. Thank you for the uh, civil discussion. Um, new business for discussion, action if any. Principal search update, Chris? Is that you?
Yeah, um, it's just a quick update. Right now, um, it's been posted, we have seven candidates that applied. And I've gone through them all and out of those seven, there are only, there was, there were three that I would interview and two that only had any prior administrative experience. So we're just gonna, wanna keep it posted longer until we get some more um, candidates. Like I said, we have three that I would interview right now. And um, out of those three, I guess all three of them have administrative experience on different levels, but um, not necessarily middle school, but just administrative experience. But right now, we have three that we could interview, but um, I'm not happy, you know, I'm happy that we have what we have, I should say. Um, but you know, we wanna make sure we're getting the best of the best candidates out there. So we're gonna keep it posted um, longer. We posted it really early, so we still have plenty of time. It's not something we wanna, we wanna rush with, so.
I was just gonna say, this is one area that we do have a little bit of time on, so that's good.
I will keep you all updated as, as things develop.
Very good. Uh, appointments, resignations? I don't think we have any. Right? No? It brings us down to director's comments. You'd like to go first? Megan, you're on the hot seat. Welcome.
Um, I just wanted, I guess I'll just say thank you for um, having me here. Um, I spent the last two unofficial weeks since you guys approved me asking more questions when I'm out, speaking with parents and teachers. And I feel like I know less now than I did then with all sorts of opinions and fears. And I appreciate the work that everybody here is doing from the, the, the school board members, the, the staff to the, the teachers and the staff that are in the, you know, paying attention. I just, I have a huge respect for all the players here and I appreciate the ability to be here.
Thank you. Jason Terry, your mic's off. Go ahead.
Megan, uh, welcome. Uh, appreciate you stepping up and taking on a challenge. I know it's not easy. Uh, George, I can, my only director comment is I can answer you about the winter sports. Um, there was uh, supposed to be a deadline of October fifteenth, which I emailed. Um, uh, Dan French, uh, Julie Moore, uh, Dr. Levine, and uh, they came back with um, probably not expecting and uh, and uh, a decision by October fifteenth, which they have not. So hopefully right now, there's nothing in the inbox. We're still looking at the numbers and um, and uh, we can do some sort of winter sports uh, activities for all the kids who desperately need it. When uh, in the middle of winter, the sun is down at four o'clock and probably driving their parents crazy and, and things like that. So um, I know U V M has uh, signed up uh, for an eighteen game schedule or something like that. I think it's, I can't remember their conference. But uh, they're gonna have a uh, a scheduled U V M um, and uh, uh, basketball for that. So um, I'm encouraged that if U V M is gonna take the leap, uh, I'm encouraged that um, our high school and all the other high schools in Vermont will be able to play uh, some hoops and and uh, curls hoops, boys hoops, uh, you know, indoor track, all that kinda stuff, uh, everything. I know it's important, it's important to me, it's important to kids and it's a part of their education. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Benson, you with us?
I am. Okay, I'd like to start off by saying thanks, Megan, for stepping up and coming on board with all of us. And I think that you're gonna be a great fit for everything considered. And on that note, for the principals, wow, you guys are hanging in there, doing a good job. And certainly Karen has a challenge with the mix of the three feet and the six feet boundaries and the ages of the students altogether. So keep it up and thank you very much again.
Priscilla.
Yes, I would say congratulations for our first day for all in K to two for at Saxons River and for kindergarten at Central. I'm glad to hear that it went well. Um, new things are challenging and share with the COVID, we had the challenge at the beginning of the year with students coming to school. And now this is almost like a total new start for school again. Uh, which is rough for teachers to rethink all of their ideas of the way it's going and for anyone that's working with the schools, the superintendent and the, all the administration all the way down. Um, I do feel that once we get into that next step and people will feel more comfortable with, with the mix, you will have less children going different places and different environments. So you will have it more of a contained type grouping, which should make it easier in the long run. Um, and hopefully if, if we get even one case in our district, we haven't had any since May, so hopefully that continues. But if we do get one, hopefully it's, you know, it's in a pod, you can only restrict, have to only quarantine in that pod as it's happened in other schools where they've said, keep them open. Just pleased that we're moving ahead and prayers that it continues to all go well. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Um, yeah, um, I, I feel like we are moving forward. It, it, sometimes it feels slow, but um, you know, it's all about balance and um, you know, I want them all back. We can't pile them on top of each other, laws, rules. But I, I appreciate uh, Chris, your comment of not being complacent and um, and the willingness of, of, you know, your administration to have forward thinking and, and keep exploring, keep finding a way. I mean, it, like I've said before, if this thing lasts all year into next year, you know, we can't be satisfied with the current model. So um, just keep, keep plugging away. You guys are, you guys are doing good. And last time, uh, gave a shout out to the cleaning crew. This time it's for the bus drivers. Um, you know, I pass them all the time. They're out there wearing their masks, doing, you know, lugging kids around. And um, so shout out to you guys. Keep up the good work and um, that's all I got. Thanks, guys. Uh, agenda items for next board meeting? Do we have any right now? I'm gonna draw a hard line this time to end of business Wednesday because Thursday is when Nicole likes to get it warned and I work, work a job. So it's, makes it difficult for me to juggle that. So if we can have everything by the end of business Wednesday, um, to get onto the agenda for the following Monday, that would be excellent. Of course, if there's emergency, something or others, we can make adjustments if we need to. Date a next board meeting, uh, meeting in person. Chris, maybe you could speak to this a little bit. We have, um, you give out um, some new, new guidelines. And I know when you and I talked, you had some thoughts. So um, I'm, I'm, I would love to get to. So um, I'm, I would love to get together and meet in person. And but it seems to be one of those things where it only worked if we all, we all were on board with it. So um, yeah, any uh, any thoughts there, Chris?
I guess, you know, thoughts to 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 board members in regards to uh, moving forward to possibly meeting in person. You know, I think we could make it work. Um, I kind of backtrack a little bit. I don't think, we're not at a point that we can have the the community come into the schools. But like I said in the memo, if we can find, you know, each school has a place where, you know, you're entering right into the room where we'll be conducting the meeting. I was thinking that board members, you know, we could, we could meet in person and I could, you know, be there with my computer on, um, handling myself, you know, handling the the Zoom aspect. So um, the public can still um, chime in if they wanted to during the time that they could. And and that would be the first step. And you may have principals as well who could still join us on on Zoom. It's changed a little bit since I spoke with George, but I think if we just take it slow and um, bring board members back um, in a, in a space um, with myself, then I think we can have probably the best of of both worlds, public participation through. We can still um, do the Zoom through through my computer and um, have board members present, but not have to have everyone's computers open. So.
Yeah, that was a, that was a a struggle um, when we attempted to do it a couple of months ago. Any um, I see you, Jason. Hang on just a second. Any, so would we uh, be having Fact TV come in so that um, would that be a situation like you had mentioned at one point?
Yeah, we could, and I was thinking we could have Fact TV come in, uh, myself, the board members, and between the Fact TV doing theirs. And then the whole point of having me there continuing to do the Zoom would be the time where public wants to participate, they, we could turn the chat on or they could come on and ask the questions. That way, um, you know, boards together, we're present, but it still gives the opportunity for public to participate because we all know, if we learned anything, that we do have a lot more public participation when we're conducting it through Zoom than we had in when it's just um, us in a room. So I'm trying to combine the two, but I think our board members have to be willing to um, you know, be willing to come to the meeting, but also know that any of us who are coming to these meetings, you know, um, we have to um, comply with the social distancing, we have to wear the masks. We've got to make sure that we're not traveling any places that um, are in a red um, or out of state. Um, I know, especially if you're not in a central worker because, you know, then you wouldn't be able to attend the board meetings either. So um, as long as we, we are meeting the social distancing guidelines, um, as a board meeting, we spread out. Um, we only have to worry about having myself with the computer open. That will alleviate the problems from the last meeting. But it's just food for thought as we move forward and we want to continue to move forward, uh, bringing people together. Um, it's just something for the boards to think about.
Jason, before I keep going, why don't you go ahead? You had a comment or a question?
No, I'm all set. Nevermind.
I'm uh, go ahead, Priscilla.
Yeah, it did not work for the last one. It was terrible trying to do the in-person with each of us doing so. So what we're saying is that Zoom would only be on during the public comment time um, because we voted against having a chatroom on. So the Zoom would be on during the, so that somebody could sign in and they could participate at that time to give a public comment. And then they would have to listen to it through the Fact TV, right?
No, I could, what I could do is I could just keep it on like we are now, but comment would be shut off. It'd only be turned on for public comment time like we're doing now um, and shut it back off. It, the whole purpose for the for the Zoom is so um, I mean, I guess we could do that too, Priscilla. We could shut off the Zoom as soon as public comment is over because Fact TV is going to be there. And that would be totally up to the board. I just figure if we're not having the public in, we need, we need to provide them an opportunity to participate. And the only opportunity we have right now is the the short time we have the comments open for them to do that. Once we're through that, we could shut down the Zoom and anyone could still watch it through the Fact TV.
But Priscilla, before you go, because I'm pretty sure I can read your thoughts right now. We uh, I believe this board decided to not have the chat open at all, right?
Right.
Right, so.
But if it's the Zoom, he could have the Zoom open during that time, George.
Right, that's what I'm just saying, the chat function is a separate, would be a separate entity from Zoom. So, you know, we could, we could explore tho- those those ideas offline if you want. Um, I personally am more than happy to get together and um, but as I said, it's not really beneficial if um, it's not a group effort. Um, so entertain any thoughts on that? I'm, I'd be hap- where where would we do that, Chris? Probably the middle school, maybe. I don't want to add any uh.
I would propose that, you know, I don't think any decisions can be made tonight. I think you keep it on the agenda for the next meeting. But the the room that I would propose would be the cafeteria. And that way, we would um, the pub, you know, us would, we would enter right through that side street door into the cafeteria and not even have to enter the buil- the main part of the building.
Okay, so why don't we leave that on there? We can chat offline and um, and you know, finalize some of the the details. And um, I I'd really like to shoot for this. So long as everybody's on board, I I think it's important. And um, it's a little different than sitting behind behind our keyboards, um, talking to somebody face to face. So um, uh, we'll, we'll leave it on here for now. I, so at this point, at this point, we're going to say that it's going to be a Zoom meeting. That could change by another week or so, but we'll leave it as Zoom for now on. And that would be, what's the date of that? Excuse me.
November second.
November second. So November second at five thirty. Tentatively via Zoom. Yes?
Sounds good.
Yes. Uh, all right, I call this meeting adjourned.